Thank you for seeing what my computer says.
Good evening, all. Calling the meeting to order at 7:00. If we could please rise. Mr. Morris is going to lead us in prayer.
Shall we pray?
Yes, sir.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for another beautiful day. Thank you for your love and your blessings. Lord, thank you for this opportunity for us to gather together each month. And Lord, we're the business of the city. And I want to thank you for the mayor and city council as they look out for the benefits of us. Lord, I especially pray for all these people that were in the path of Hurricane Cody. And I pray, Lord, that you would comfort and encourage them. Lord, we know, most of us have friends and family that live in one of those states that was affected. So we pray for each of those peoples and especially those who have lost loved ones or family members. And we pray for this storm that's headed our way now, Lord, as it passes across Florida. They've already been hit once, so I pray that you would make this one a lesser effect on their lives. Lord, once again, I want to thank you for this time together. And I pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. And if you'll join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America. In due republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Jessica, if we can get a roll call, please.
Rose Beach, Sherri Gaskell.
Here.
Amy Long.
I can't hear. I need somebody to...
Did Amy say she couldn't hear?
Yeah.
Amy, can you hear us?
How about that?
Yes.
Amy, Jessica just called you on roll call.
Oh, I'm here, yes.
Dan Martin.
Here.
Barbara Pharoah.
Here.
Matt Brown.
Here.
Do we need to mute that one over there? Oh, Matt's here? Where'd you get Matt?
Mute this one or this one?
He's going to mute his. Apologies. Spare with us one moment.
Technology's great.
Okay, and so just a few announcements. Sorry. We're trying to avoid the feedback. Thank you for your patience.
I guess my advanced degree doesn't cover this kind of stuff.
And we'll try that again. Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Announcements again. So we are moving our caucus meeting to Monday, November the 4th, because Tuesday, November the 5th, is Election Day. That'll be at 6:30 in council chambers. Council meeting will be Tuesday, November the 12th at 7:00 PM. City Hall will be closed for Columbus Day, and that's October the 14th. And on November the 11th, we'll have our Veterans Day celebration at the Senior Center. And City Hall will be closed that day as well. Can I get approval of the agenda?
Motion to amend the agenda to add the short-term ordinance.
And Amy, second? Go ahead, Jess.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Barbara Pharoah?
Yes.
Sherri Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
And if I can get an approval of the minutes, that would be for August the 13th and September 10th council meetings?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Two days meetings next.
Second.
Okay, so Amy motion to combine. And Sherri the second.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Barbara Pharoah?
Yes.
Sherri Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
Did we approve the agenda or we just amend the agenda?
You amended it. And now you just approved it.
Okay.
As amended.
Thank you.
Just making sure.
And we'll move right along to our citizen comments. So I'm just going to open the floor for any citizen that has a comment this evening.
Yeah, I don't understand what this morning is. Is that where everybody?
Absolutely, yes, sir. So it's normally the first Tuesday of each month at 6:30 in council chambers until we exceed capacity of 17, at which point we bring it here. But for November, it's our planning working meeting where we have open discussion and citizens are absolutely invited to come and share concerns or to chime in on our conversation. And normally, again, it's the first Tuesday at 6:30 in council chambers. But for November, because of election night, we're going to do it on Monday, the first Monday. Are there any other questions or comments by the citizens? Moving right along. So we have with our Sheriff's Department, Major Bill Mark.
Good evening. Great to be with you all tonight. The council already has a copy of my report. But for the audience here, there are 975 law enforcement events filed by the sheriff's office in the city of Walton in the month of September. Some of those include four 911 hangups. Deputies responded to 19 alarm drops. They handled five attempts to locate. Four animal complaints. Deputies worked 21 auto accidents. Two of those involved injured occupants of the car. We investigated one burglary. Deputies logged 19 business checks. We attended 47 civil or criminal summonses. They documented one criminal mischief report. Investigated 14 domestic disputes. Nine complaints of intoxicated persons. Nine emotional crises. One juvenile trouble complaint. And handled six motorist assists. Responded to one overdose. Fifteen requests for information. They logged 422 stop checks. Handled 23 suspicious activity reports. Investigated one theft. Deputies logged 22 traffic complaints. And conducted 49 traffic stops. Took 22 vehicle complaints. We unlocked 12 cars. Handled four complaints of wanted persons. And all told, they issued 61 citations and made eight arrests. Any questions? I can take free.
Thank you, sir. I did have a citizen reach out, and Mr. Bogdan and counsel, they were requesting another speed hump on Mullen because their feedback was that Mullen is a drag strip. And so counsel did talk about the speed humps at caucus. And that's not something we're moving forward with currently. However, I did share that I would ask for increased police presence.
And I too took a complaint from a resident on Gemstone Point specifically about some parking issues that I think we've moved towards resolving. And also some complaints about kids riding motorcycles in the neighborhood. We had increased patrols back in that neighborhood.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Major, what council, what?
Generally, that's an area in the city where there's been, not necessarily issues, but an area that might constitute a high crime area, like a business closed after hours or some area in the city where we've had, of course, criminal activity in the past. So it's just a way for deputies to log that they had patrol a specific address in the city.
So the sheriff's office is currently conducting accident investigation.
It's time to... Yeah, I'll trust your math, sir.
On social media, I'm sure we all probably witnessed that the car break-ins are happening again.
That occurred overnight. I don't know. We took several reports this morning. Our deputies had received a report of a reckless vehicle operating on Walton Nicholson that we have on video being involved in the thefts back off of Mullen. And deputies attempted to stop the car. It fled from us. We did not pursue. But however, Kent County pursued it once across the county line in Florence. And they chased it to Cincinnati. And it was later determined that the car was stolen. And that's been kind of the typical MO is they'll steal a car and then use that car to commit thefts from other vehicles in neighborhoods. Primarily high-value content scroll vehicles.
Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And so our fire department, I know Chief Vest is on vacation this week, correct?
He is.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sorry, your name is?
I'm Steve.
Thank you, sir. Will you give us the fire department update? Absolutely. Thank you.
Sorry, folks, for running behind. It's just been a day of days, if I can use that terminology. But anyway, my name is Steve Vesely. Chief Vest is on vacation. I am tied into my primary function to oversee all the EMS operations within the department. We have the fault of our run volume. For the previous month, we did do 136 ambulance runs and 48 fire runs. We did respond to 16 motor vehicle accidents. And we did have four overages in the district. On top of that, we've done a number of public education events this month as well. It's getting to that time of year where we do lots of public education events. And we're kind of expanding and getting a new equipment. We've recently taken delivery of two new fire engines. So we're working those into service. Those are well overdue. And as well as we do have another ambulance that orders a lot of deeper and fit. That's kind of all I have at this moment. I'm not sure what else Chief generally shared. But I'm hoping any questions anybody might have.
So I think Chief had shared with us the projected timeline for the new engines would have been the 12th. So they're already in your possession?
Yes, we do have them in possession. There's a number of steps before we can actually put them in service. Right now, we are putting equipment and hoses on there. We have to get training from the factory because the pumps, these are 2,000 gallon per minute pumps. And they work a little different than the pumps we currently have. So we will be doing training on that as well. The goal is to have them in service prior to the end of the month, hopefully by the 26th. Originally, we were shooting for the 19th, which is going to be in conjunction with our open house. The vehicles will be there for the public to see and look at and ask questions about. But I don't want to commit to them being in service by 19th. We're definitely shooting for the 26th ever two new engines in service.
Thank you, sir. And then the open house, as you mentioned, is still on the 19th, 11 to 3.
Yes, 11 to 3, 19 at the firehouse.
Awesome. Any other questions?
Is the new ambulance going to replace an older piece of equipment? Or is it you guys need more coverage?
So right now, the plan is, so we understand there's a lot of growth, especially in the Richwood area. And we're kind of anticipating the run volume increase. Making homes typically increase run volumes. It's just anywhere in the country. They tend to attract more runs, as well as some of the other projects that are slated for there. Right now, it's going to replace a piece of equipment. But the goal is to have two additional personnel at Station 1 that can place a third ambulance in service as the call volume dictates. Right now, we have an ambulance at Station 1, an ambulance at Station 2 in Richwood. And then we just have a reserve in case one of them goes in for service air maintenance. But the end goal is to actually have the staffing of Station 1 designated to cover the third out ambulance. So in essence, we will eventually, I don't want to commit to that timeline here tonight, but eventually have three ambulances that will be able to function throughout our fire mission.
The tragedy in Owen County yesterday, is that going to directly affect you guys? Or were they in a different coverage area?
So I was talking, that was going to topic of discussion, myself and some of the other personnel that are in my position for various other departments and organizations. We have been in talks with Aircare about that because, yes, there was overlapping service areas. But those runs now are going to be vacant because obviously there's no aircraft to handle those runs. So that's going to be automatically falling to whatever the closest helicopter available is. Right now, the conversation is very, very preliminary. And so I can't give you many definitive answers. Yes, it is going to have an effect as far as people getting, critical patients getting transported. But also EMS helicopters do a lot of inter-facility transfers. So if somebody's injured or critically sick at an outlying hospital and they are unable to treat that person, a lot of times they will be flung by medical helicopters to more appropriate facilities. And those helicopters do a lot of those. So there is going to be that gap. And those conversations have started. I don't want to speculate anyway how that's going to go right now. Like I said, this just is barely 24 hours old. That question has been brought up because it's going to have an effect, especially over the next six to eight months. Because there's really no designated timeframe for them to get back up and running. I don't know what their vision is. You know, they're still grieving and working through that whole process right there. And that's probably going to occupy most of the time for the next few weeks minimum before they can start looking to reconstitute in a place. So that'll be an ongoing thing that we want to obviously be involved in conversations with. And in future meetings, we can definitely keep everybody updated, you know, as these conversations take place.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir, for being here.
No worries. Again, I apologize for being late.
No worries. We appreciate your presence. Next up, Cardinal Engineering, Mr. Matt Bogdan. And time for the train.
All right. Evening, everybody. So I've got several road project updates this month. This is the time of year we're trying to get everything tied up for the end of the season. We did the first set of concrete hill replacements, concrete hill replacement repairs with dirtworks. We're on Shepherd's, getting the hail. There were some hiccups that figured pretty well to be our first run at it. Jerry and I are looking at other areas around the city.
Jerry, I don't hear him at all. I heard the other two, but I can't hear him.
Amy can't hear you.
All right.
I can move her down to the other end of the table. Oh, yeah, that's...
Is that better, Amy?
So, yeah, Jerry and I have a list of other areas that... Still left there?
No, she can hear you better now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Just to prioritize areas, you know, either required repairs where public works has done some water main patching or, you know, potential trip hazards, anything like that. And then more recommended maintenance, you know, catching big before they turn into bigger problems. So I'd like to get at least one more round of repairs in this fall and then let it go through the winter, you know, preserve at least half the budget and then see how things look in the spring and then reevaluate that list. Regler is in town this week doing the access driveway to the Austin Valley Pump Station. So once that's tied up, that'll be wrapped up, that'll be the end of our Main Streets contract. And then Tomashka is in town to do the miscellaneous asphalt patching repairs. They've got all of that done except for restoration, which should be done probably this week. And then they will be over at the park doing the grading out, the new parking area. On Richland Court, we have the area that's been reported that had some, there were voids under the road resulting from a water main leak a month ago. Civil Solutions came out and did a geotechnical study. They found a series of voids under the road itself and the parking pads. And they're getting an estimate together for us to do repairs on it. Probably be a combination of foam injection into the smaller areas. And on the larger voids, they'll just, they'll do a full tear out replacement. So I should be hearing something from them any day now. And then also, we had a drainage complaint that came up behind Mr. Gee's. Did some investigation through myself, as Bogdan, and Bobby McDonald, co-enforcement, and found that there is some old city right of way that passes through that area. It was a street that was never built. And we have no paper trail that that was ever, that that right of way was ever vacated and turned over to the private property owners. So, you know, in order to get all that squared away, Cardinal would need to go out and do a boundary survey in that area and prepare a plaid legal descriptions to get all that formalized with the county. So our cost to do that would be about $11,000. And that's the field survey, the legal documents, all that. And then we pass it off to Mr. Duncan to get that filed. So, you know, council's okay with that. We'll get that moving. There's not really any real reason for the city to maintain that property. It's, you know, that right of way, it's already been treated as public, or, I'm sorry, private property for at least a couple decades, if not longer. There are, there's a new one and there are other structures. So there's no benefit for us to keep that. At the Owens Park property, I met out there, Jerry and I met with Regler today to lay out the route for the first phase of the multi-use path. Made some adjustments just to, you know, get around the trees where the grades would work, you know, easier to work with. They did identify some areas where it would be beneficial to add some additional culvert pipes just to catch the low areas and get the water under the path so that doesn't, you know, leave the mud and all that running onto it. Their cost for that would be $20,430. And that's four runs of pipe and five head walls just to, you know, protect the bank there. So council's okay with that. I'll give them the go-ahead. And then had a scroll water complaint that came up at the end of Land of Court. There are two properties that the runoff from the backyards and side yards, as well as their down and outs and sub pump lines, it all flows towards the street and crosses over the same area of the sidewalk. And it just gets mud buildup and slime and, you know, could be a potential trip hazard. The property owners asked about what the city could do about it. And in my opinion, since all of the runoff is originating on private property, it would be on the property owners to address it. But I don't really think there's a good way for them to do that without doing things in the right of way. So I think it would be in the city's best interest to find some kind of a way to collaborate with them on it. We looked at it today. I'm going to come up with a few alternatives, kind of, I guess, small scope of work to those involved and discuss what's the best way to proceed with it. You know, it might just be as simple as roofing and replacing a couple sections of sidewalk. Just sloping, pitching it towards the street more so it drains out better. Or potentially adding another drain at the street in time of the catch breaks in the local pool. But I hope to have something for you guys to look at next quarter, a couple options away. Any questions for council or public?
And just speaking with Mr. Duncan for council's benefit here, he stated that we could probably go ahead and vote for the change order for the additional $20,000 on the path if council wants to do that by motion?
Yeah, in other words, we put this project out for bid. It was awarded to Regler. And in the discovery phase, we found that it needs a change order. So it would require council to approve that, to go forward. Is it going to hold up anything if we wait?
Potentially, they're ready to get moving.
Yeah.
They could probably get started out there next week, so...
So if we're going to do it, we should do it tonight?
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah, if we put it off until next month, we potentially be running out of, you know...
Running out of weather.
Matt and Amy, could you hear clearly?
I did discuss with councilman Brown earlier this afternoon.
Okay.
So that would require a motion and a second and a vote of council?
I'll make motion.
Thank you.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Sherri Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Bogdan. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Bogdan? Oh, we forgot Barb. Sorry. And she better, yes, sorry. Thank you. Sorry, Barb.
Matt, the Mr. Gee's right of way, we can discuss that at council next month before we need to take any action there.
Sure.
Yeah, there's nothing urgent there that needs to be handled tonight, but, you know, something... Yep. It's a complicated situation over there. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And we have special guests this evening with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, District 6. So we have Robert Jaeger and his counterpart, Jamie Wood. And it's your turn, sir, if you'd like to present. We appreciate you being here, both of you.
Almost close. Jamie's my boss.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's my staff advisor, and I don't go anywhere without her. As a matter of fact, I forgot to bring business cards, but she brought some, so, but they have her name on them. I am Robert Jaeger.
We know who to call.
Near to the Highway Department, District 6. I'm familiar with Allen Highway. The department's broken up. We have 12 districts across the state. Each one has somewhere between nine and 12 counties. So we've got 11, we've got the 11 in Kentucky County, Campbell County, Boone, Bracken, Robertson, Harrison, Ellington, Grant, all the ones that encompass the circle so pretty much surely. So you can't go anywhere out of your, out of your county and not be in our district. I started full-time at the Department of Highways in January 1975. And if your math is right, here's the math guy back there. I saw him back there. It'll be 50 years in general. So a long career. I've seen a number of numerous projects from start to finish. And I'm well aware of the length it takes to complete a major project like interchange modification on I-75 in Walton. The interchange modification of Walton is one of probably two dozen projects we have to upgrade interchanges. Almost every interchange. Some have been done in the last few years. Others are on the cusp. If you look at the interchanges even on I-275, it seems like just built just 50 years ago. You know, there's a lot of things that should be done. We had a lot of foresight when we did things back when we built the interchanges back in the 50s and 60s. But of course, most of that's now upgraded. And I won't say really upgraded. I'd say it was just thrown over. It's sort of outgrown the apps, so to speak. So we're looking for a new app. We're looking for a way to improve what we've got there. And the best way to move up forward. That's not an easy task. As a matter of fact, we're just in a preliminary stages of the reconstruction process. And we're only a couple of years into the eight to 10-year process. So if you're expecting to drive in a new road tomorrow, wait 50 years and talk about 40 years ago, how about that? I'll try to explain where we are in process, how we got to this point, and what can be expected going forward. I think that should answer a lot of questions. But first, I have a question for you. How many of you were aware that the state gasoline tax was reduced on July 1st? You can answer. It's what you asked on July 1st for this year by 2.3 cents a gallon. Anybody? To Kilkenny County. Did you see a difference in the gasoline cost on July 1st? Anybody see a difference? I mean, I'm going to go get gas on July 1st. Gas is 2.3 cents cheaper. It was probably 10 cents more. But we didn't have nothing to do with that other part of the way it goes up. It went up 10 cents yesterday. I don't know why. It wasn't me that we didn't do it. So many of you didn't even know the price was adjusted, and it had very little impact on you individually. If you drive an average of 15,000 miles a year and you only get 15 miles per gallon, you save less than $2 a month for the 2.3 cents. $2 a month, that's not a pack of cigarettes, not a gallon of milk, that's not anything to you. On the other hand, Kentucky Transportation Cabinet loses $16 million a year for 2.5 cent, 1.3 cent decrease. $60 million a year. And that's substantial. That's a lot. So when you think about if we ever raised the gasoline tax by 2.3 cents and it cost you $2 a month, $60 million builds your interchange. So just keep things in perspective when we're talking about costs and stuff. So we're extremely, we keep costs at... So, we're extremely, we're, we're extremely, we keep costs at, at that bay as best as we can. Cost is not the only thing we consider when we consider projects, but it has to be part of that because the money, as Jay will tell you, does not grow on trees. I've been down in Frankfurt a lot of times, I've never seen that tree, so we're, we're always looking for a way to do things more efficiently, more effectively, but we can't just let cost drive things. We're not always gonna do things cheaper. You wouldn't wanna buy a house because it's cheaper, you wouldn't wanna do anything because it's cheaper because you want, we're in it for the long haul, we're in it for the long term. It's taken us this long to get to the point where we're looking at reconstructing this interchange and we wanna make sure we do it right from the start. So, decisions, or tough decisions being made to be sure that your tax dollars are being used as wisely as we can. And Jay's in my office all the time telling me how to, how to make sure we do that. So, enough of my commentary. As I mentioned earlier, we're in the initial stages of project development process. Specifically, there are five phases. We're generally just right now in phase two. Phase one was a planning stage where people get together and say, okay, something needs to get done, there's accidents happening, traffic's backing up, congestion, you know, we can't get to where we are, we're already number of accidents overhead, I'm sure some of us were along state routes, so we're concerned about those things. We wanna make our roads as safe as we can. We wanna make them convenient and we certainly wanna make sure that they're cost-effective. The second stage is preliminary engineering and environmental evaluation. When you work a, a project like this, it's a federal project, but it's not just federal funds. Every federal project, most of our federal projects have at least ten, twenty percent of state funds in it, so we gotta go out and hunt as well. The feds don't give us the money, they, they then have forty-nine other states and four regions and other places, they give transportation funds too, so we, we buy for those. It goes by a formula and we get a certain amount and we try to use that along with our state funds to do everything we possibly can with, with every project. I'd love to say we're here and we got plenty of money and we can do everything that needs to get done, but we, I have to prioritize this. The good news is that this project has been prioritized and we are moving forward, so that's the good news. But the bad news is for some, it's not fast enough. This process is preliminary because that requires us to go through a certain number of things. One of the big things is environmental and when we talk about environmental, it's not just human environment, not just the way we affect people, it's the way we actually affect the environment. You know, that buffalo clover, Indiana vats, anybody from Indiana, take some home with you, I don't need any more than that. But, but we have to look at a lot of things, out, out there impacted by that. Low-income housing, high-income housing, all those things all feed into there. So, there's an extensive process that we go through to look at how the environmental could be impacted by this project. We currently have most of that data done. That's a, that's a huge part in the environmental process. What we're looking for is in the I-M-R, the interchange modification report. That report then says, we give that to the feds, they bless it, they say, okay, you can move forward with your preferred alternative and that's what we're shooting for now. I'm sure we got most of that report written and along with the preferred alternative, we should have that complete near the end of the year. One of the, one of the things within the environmental document is to get the input, that, as you know, some of you probably know, if we ask for it, we extended a public comment for a few weeks, had closed on the twenty-fourth, so we're now, having all those comments and concerns and making sure we're not missing anything. And you say, well, what are you looking for? What, how can we possibly help? Well, if there was a cemetery, if there was a, if there was an old house, if there was some kind of historic thing, if we knew about something going on, something that would make, make things what we call a fuel breaker. You know, we had to be, we think about work and learn, so can we, can we avoid it? Avoidance is our, is our biggest thing. If we have something that we have, we're not supposed to touch, we first have to try to avoid it. If we can't avoid it, we try to mitigate it, if we can't mitigate it, then we have to do something else. So, it's really hard to get through so many things and some of them don't make a lot of sense to the user. Personally, they don't make sense to me. So, you know, when we, when we work through these things, we try to work as quickly as we can to get through there, but it's thorough as well because they will ask us for that. Once we have an environmental document at hand, move to environmental document and we have the preferred alternative, we can then move into final design. And that design then takes everything we've learned, which is not very much engineering yet, and we take that, we determine the number of lanes, we determine how we're gonna go, whether they're gonna go, whether we're gonna do curb and gutter, if we're gonna do their shoulders, we're gonna, how we're gonna handle entrances, all those things are all done and then final design. That's a lengthy process, that can take two years because there are so many things we have to take into consideration. During that time, we'll determine what, what right of way is needed to come up with that particular plan. So, someone's gonna apparently get questions now about, well, is my house gonna be taken or is my property gonna be taken or am I gonna, is my entrance gonna be moved in? Those questions are not answered yet because again, if the environmental document dictates we have to do something on the left instead of the right, that changes how we're gonna, how we're gonna move forward. So, a lot of those questions are gonna be done there and I'm glad that when we get to start into the right of way, to come out and explain where, where this project's actually gonna go, because right now, it's just a, it's just a line of disrepair. Design, design, as I mentioned, can take, can take two years, maybe a little longer depending how complicated it gets. That puts us to twenty twenty-six, okay? And then twenty, and then after that, we would be looking at negotiating right of way for a number of commercial properties and commercial properties are usually pretty difficult to do because number one, firstly, you have to determine the value, they'll be able to come up with exactly the numbers, so there'll be some bickering, almost all of them go to some kind of suit of court. Two, once you do that, then you have to make, you have to make the reasonable offer and we have to come in front of that person that has the site, where they're gonna relocate to, and we usually give them time to do that. Most places who have a nice business here won't stay here, so looking for a place here, move to a healthier location, look for a suitable place to do that. It may or may not be possible depending on what the business is and, and how your zoning goes and the whole bits. If you're looking ahead, then you've got places for this, this place to go, the places that maybe, maybe you're looking for something, that would be a good time to start. That process typically on a regular project, not on interstate, could take as much as two years to acquire the right of way. All the right of way has to be acquired before we can start construction. And that's just the way it is, so we have, we have right of way clearance. So, along with that, we also will be discussing with the utility companies, because almost every utility likes to follow our right of way. So, there isn't any utility out here in the home that's not gonna be impacted by this project, not the phone, not the water, not the gas, not the, not the telephone, you know, not the, not cable, you, you name it, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna get it. Okay, so that, that's gonna take us to twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So, in earnest, construction may not start till twenty twenty-nine. Again, because of the complexities, if we were building this out, say, let's say, four or five miles south of here in virgin territory where we weren't disrupting traffic, it'd be pretty easy, but we're gonna try to get everybody to work while we're doing that. You'll get to be in our backyard every day we're working and we're gonna try to get you to this specific company. If anybody visited Ridgewood or Mount Sinai where we're constructing at, the people didn't like going to us. It's a lot better now, but if you have to go through this every day, you can see that. If we could shut it down, just, or just build it somewhere else and move it in, it'd be great, but it doesn't work that way. So, we have to accommodate all the traffic that's going through there now, the most traffic, some people will find open, but most of the traffic's going through there. So, we're not gonna shut down more than we can. So, we're gonna have to work around and through that and that's one of the most complicated parcels of what we've got. Maintenance of traffic is only third to the construction cost, commodity cost right now. Maintenance is that because you have to, you have to keep shifting things, you have to build, you've seen it, every place we go, you build a little bit, you move them over, you build a little bit, you move over, you keep doing that. But every time they move them over, there's a cost associated with that, nobody's doing it. And so, you know, and people would like for us to work at night, of course, we pay a premium for that and would like us to not work when they, they don't care if we work twenty-three hours a day, just don't work the hour they go through. Well, if I can get everybody to go through one hour, I'm, I'm, people are waiting. So, we're, we're, we gotta be cognizant of what, what we're impacting and nobody's gonna be more impacted than the people. But this is a, this is a viable interstate project, national funds. Our main concern is the congestion on the interstate and the ramps and that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do. If we straighten that out, the rest is left on policy and place. So, here, you, you, if you followed what we've done, we came up with a few options. First option, there's always a no-build option, just don't do anything. And that's discounted pretty quickly because of the accidents, because of the congestion, because of stuff. If you look at that and you look twenty years down the road, and that's what we've tried to do, not try to fix things for today, but fix things so that I'm not back talking to you, maybe my grandkids will be back and talk to you, but I got one that's started engineering in UK this, a couple of months ago, so maybe you can talk to me about the next time. But the, but the idea is we don't wanna do something so short-sighted that we're, don't look that we're, that it's not gonna be in good shape for twenty thirty, at least. So, we're already talking eight, sixty-eight years before we start, so we're looking at twenty-five years of life. So, we're gonna say, ah, we, we don't need a fourth lane, we don't need a sixth lane, we don't need ten lanes today, but put your pecking cap on and see what we're gonna need in the near future. And that's what we do, we do a lot of spitting, we do, there's a, a lot of guesswork into it, but it's educated guesswork. You know, I don't know that everybody here has children, but I'd guess that the average is two point three. You know, that's just the way statistics work. Okay, so we had two alternatives, viable alternatives, not the no-build. One was the, the double crossover diamond or VDI's, they're interchangeable. And it's a, the virgin diamond interchange uses signals to shift opposing traffic, so if you've been down on three thirty-eight or a, a, a Mount Sinai, you know what it is, we shift them over so that your left turns are uninhibited. So, if you were coming from this, coming from the west, you'd want to cross, you'd be able to go north without, without anybody getting in your way, continuous flow. If you're getting, if you're gonna go south, you just get on the ramp before you get to the line. Okay, if you're coming from the other direction, the same thing happens, you get on the other side and you go south, you have it out. The idea is that, that it reduces conflict points so it's safer, it's a freer flow so that it's more convenient, more cost-effective, everything, and you can kinda do that without a, without a lot of turmoil. When the first one was built, it got to be a little confusing and I think we're getting, we're getting better at doing it and following the signs is a big thing and, and of course, AI's gonna take care of it, Jay, so you just have to sit back and read your book while you're, while someone's driving for you.
Yeah, okay.
So, the, the DCD has its safety and capacity advantages over a traditional diamond interchange while requiring more access controls, so access control's a big thing because that's where the suggestions, if you can, you can imagine an, an old county road that you used to drive, drive through and you could probably look at the flowers and the trees and everything and you were in good shape. And then somebody sold their farm and put a sub-advent and put fifteen driveways in. Did you, did you, did you change? Did you have to do that? So, if we'd have thought about it and we said, okay, we'll give you one entrance on this side and all those, all those people have to come off on the side street, then they come out on the main road, how much better would that be? That's access control. That's controlling where you, where you can receive access. The full, only full access control we have is basically the interstate, you can't get on anywhere you want, you can have property right next to the interstate, but you can't cut the fence and build it and we control the access. So, if, we're trying to do more of that with more of our roads. So, when we first built the interstates out here, I would corner one of the gas station. That's all well and good until, until it gets congested, you can't get in or out, then they run a traffic signal, or then you have a traffic signal, you gotta stop, then they stop and then they gotta stop on the interstate and you back up. So, if we could eliminate some of that for some distance before you allow people to stop, let them move freely, you get, you get a lot better, you get a lot better access. That's the access control. Okay, so, the other thing about the, about the DCD is if we aligns, technically fourteen, sixteen, approximately two hundred feet north, so we're actually gonna build a new interchange, two hundred feet north of where the interchange is. And you say, well, that seems kinda dumb, you have to do things. Well, there's a good reason for that. Number one is if we build it somewhere else, we get to keep the one open that we got. So, you get to get where you're getting to today by the way you've been getting it. So, that's a lot of getting. The idea is, it's like building it somewhere else and bringing it in, but we rebuild it and by doing that, we can then extend, extend the arms or the, of the legs out farther and, and fix the, fix the congestion that we got right at the interchange and that's the advantage of doing it. Now, that, so we relocated the interstate in twelve ninety-two and Kentucky fourteen and sixteen approximately nine hundred feet from where it is today. Now, by doing that, you can see what that's gonna do, the bus, the truck stops, you know, all of those problems sort of go away. It increases storage capacity and provides access control between the intersection and the interchange signals, so you've got a lot more room to sort of stack stuff up. I hate it when you get, you only get two cars through the next light and then you only get two cars through the next light and so you, you, you just keep continuing going down the road with every, you have to stop at every traffic signal because all the cars are coming in the side and you just never get, you never get a free flow. Okay? The, it also eliminates global access between the new interchange and School Road on this side and the, and they relocated twenty-nine two on the other side, so there's this whole gap in there where nobody can turn left or right. Free flow, access control. What you do is you bring those people back around from the other side so they have to come in from farther out. This is, this is a longer runway to kinda, kinda get back up to speed and get back in to the thing. Again, looking at the viable alternative, the interstate is what we're trying to get, trying to get free flow and the ramps. Okay? This, this particular one acquires, could acquire as many as five, multiple properties than one residence. I, I think, I think that's a tough sell because that's expensive, five, if you take five businesses, that's expensive. Moving it two hundred feet, taking away the business on its side helps the entire area. Alternative two is a spooey and it sounds like it should be ice cream salt, I don't know. Anyway, spooey is a single-point urban interchange. So, if you look at your typical culvert lease or whatever you got, you got the ramps coming in this side, you got the ramps coming in this side, these have to stop, these have to stop, you go, you stop, you go, you stop. A single-point interchange puts the light right in the middle, you go, you go, you go, you go, one time, you just stop. So, you get, you get to make those movements at the same time. So, the single-point urban interchange is certainly more efficient than our, than our traditional cullvert. And, and it works well, where it works well. It's a great concept. Matter of fact, it was strongly considered here for a few reasons. It would configure the existing service interchange into a single-point urban interchange that relocates twelve ninety-two approximately seven hundred fifty feet to the west, so it did the same thing the Owen does. It splits the I-75 south exit ramp so that the ramp goes off farther south and then ties straight in across the way so you get to the truck stop, you don't have to make the, the right and then the left, so making that a straight shot, so that, that works really well. It improves safety better than the traditional diamond interchange. It's, it reduces the intersection signals from two to one, so nobody likes to stop the signals and, you know, signals, in most parts, even if they're green most of the time, I always think kind of the red lights. And increases the distance between interchange and the intersection of Kentucky fourteen, sixteen and twelve ninety-two, so we do, we did get those advantages. Okay? The alternate one, we looked at the two, it's recommended because it improves the signal capacity for a high number of left turn vehicles, because there's a tremendous number of left turn vehicles on the turnout. So, it improves, improves that. It better alleviates congestion long-term. So, even though the, the spooey would work today, it doesn't function very well in, in the near future. So, the idea is let's build something that's gonna last, let's, let's don't ask Bobby every time I can talk to him, you know, within twenty years. It improves the safety of the traditional diamond interchange and it's, and it's, it's, the safety's better than the spooey. The spooey still has conflict points, the double crossover diamond takes away most of those. It promotes constructability, these are the two big things, because if you build a spooey where we are, where does the traffic go when we're building it? The problem with building it where we are is the bridge has to be elevated, has to be raised. The new standards for clearance under the bridge is a couple of feet higher than it is today. So, in order to do that, we have to literally take the bridge out and raise it up. You do that half at a time, because there are two bridges there, you do it half the time and cut the traffic down to one lane and stretch it for long periods of time. And if you do that, you have to cut off at least one, maybe two ramps at a time and this could be months, maybe up to a year it'd be closed, you have to, but you have to have lengthy detours down. Lengthy detour for me is not very bad because I'm likely to drive it, you know, I'm gonna get my state car and I'm gonna go around the detour. But for everybody else, ten, an extra ten minutes on your travel every single day for a year could be, could be quite challenging. So, even though construction in the area, moving it to one side, allowing you to stay on where you are now till we're done and then tearing all bridges down makes more sensible constructability to stay on. It's not only easier, it's nearly impossible to do under those conditions. So, we looked at, said, okay, well, what if we build a spooey and we move the spooey like we're doing the double crossover diamond and build it? Well, if you do that, you've, you've lost the benefit of all the, all the money you would save from the spooey because you now still have to buy those places you weren't gonna buy before because you moved the road down to the, past those, those commercial people, those commercial, those towns. vehicles, those commercial, those towns. So again, we have to, we have to move forward, so looking at all the options. We, we wanted to, we wanted, it also puts 14, 16 on the new line for a big part, and helps to, I think, to release some, release some interesting things there. When we, we had, we closed the public comment period 24th, and I asked them to pull up the data, just so I could see what went. And it surprised me a little bit, and I'm somewhat surprised. The difference, the people that wanted a spooey versus people that wanted a double crossover diamond, it was about 50/50. You know, so it wasn't in a real clear, clear way for those. But I don't always take that on account, because that's only a few hundred people, that's not 17,000 people that used to. If I got 17,000 votes and everybody was one way or the other, we'd have to reconsider. But I'd ask them, are you okay with, are you okay with being delayed for the next few years? Are you okay with taking a detour, you know, out of your way? Are you okay with those kinds of things? And so you, you handle it, but understanding what you're actually telling me to do. The goodness, the goodness is that we are, I'm going to say it very different, we're passionate about what we do, but we want to make sure we're, for the $50 million we're spending here, for the 2.3 cents that you are not paying today, I want to make sure you get every penny, every 2.3 cents that we're putting in this project. Now, it is a federal project, the feds pay 90% of the cost, we pay, we pay a lot of things, and we, we have to follow the procedures. And it's a lengthy procedure. Typically, we'd be talking to you closer to the right away phase, so we can tell you what impacts are going to happen. But I know, I know a lot of you are here today because you're interested in what we're doing today, and I want to make sure that you're going to put that. Yes?
All right. I came to this meeting just because of this.
Thank you.
So I did miss the public comment period from my due list, and I didn't get to it. And I kind of were close, same building, so it kind of brought to my attention. I own land to the north, so I own the Claryon Building. And we own a piece of land to the south of that, that wraps around the armory. So your alternate one will take some of our land.
I, I'm not going to say it will, based on, based on preliminary design, until we get the DDI design.
And that's not, I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. That's not even what I'm hearing. Your initial thing you asked.
Don't want so good.
That it does take some, that's the least of my concern.
Okay.
Now, I live about three miles south, so I'm affected on both sides of this, sure day. Now, I know the public comment is open, but I know if everybody to the south of Mary Dobbs Highway knew that the public comments would be open, here's one thing that they would want, and here's what I'm recommending. If you do not give the trucks in Pilot an exit to the service road next to the concrete company that can come out in the morning to get up to that interchange, you're making a huge mistake.
Are you talking about direct construction or, what's that? Direct construction or when the plan's finished?
Through the final.
Okay.
Here's, here's why, and I, and I take photos every day, so I, I deal with that interchange six times a day sometimes. And when I go north, I can't get over to the left lane to cross because of the trucks. So I got to battle them in the morning. And I feel for them, because they can't take a left turn. And that's the whole point of what I'm saying, they cannot take a left turn out of the, out of the, you know, because they're sleeping, they come out in the morning, the same time we're going to work. So that's item one. But then, when I am going south, they are taking left turns, and I can't go south, everybody curves around them, and it's kind of dangerous at that point. So.
Total reason why we're, we're doing this.
What's that?
Total reason why we're building the interchange.
Yeah, so here is my, here's my recommendation, you've got to give them an access in northwest corner of Pilot to that service road. I favor alternate one, because I'm thinking long term. If we do the spooey, it's a mistake, that's short term thinking. So alternate one, I do like, I favor that. And I like the fact you can build the bridge and everything stays open. But you've got to give them an exit in the northwest corner of the Pilot parking lot. And they, it'll be good for the truckers, it'll be good for the community, and it'll be good that anybody that travels up and down that road. Because they will literally get out, there'll be two people on that service road, concrete trucks and semis, and they'll be able to come right off of that interchange, and then they can do whatever the hell they want from there. And so I did not see that in there, but if I could ask a thousand people to the south, I would have a thousand votes, they would favor that. There, it's not fair that the public.
They favor a solution.
They would favor what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
But, and all I'm simply saying.
Well, but, okay.
All I'm saying is, you've got to give them access out of the, write this down, the northwest corner of the Pilot parking lot, give them access to that service road. That's all that I'm saying. I love alternate one, but you, your engineers, the preliminary design did not have that in there. Northwest corner, tie that, give them an exit. I am surprised Pilot hasn't had an army of lawyers in office, and maybe they have. Give them that exit, access to that service road by the concrete trucks, and it'll improve this community. And if I could ask a thousand people that live on that road, they would sing us unanimous. I'm not saying everybody favors alternate one, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying if I could show them that, I would win a thousand out of a thousand votes. And so I hope your engineers will take that into consideration, because the issue is not them getting into Pilot, it's the issue of them getting out of Pilot. They can't make a left turn, and when they can't make a left turn, we can't go south or north. And that's really all I'm saying.
I'm taking up too much time. But, but as I mentioned earlier, access management is going to be a big thing, and there are going to be changes to the way people get in and on and off it. A great comment, because we don't want to, we don't want to do all of this and then have a congestion birthday, anyone? Thank you. Yes?
So, check in, who can I commission this to, um, present the survey down there? I've got initial design drawings, crossover, and your single point urban interchange. I've talked to most of the owners down there in the area. The spooey is a word, design drawing in that area, so it takes up a lot of private property in the area. I get the point of, based on the initial drawings, I guarantee you. But it also fixes a problem officials were saying about in terms of access to X Y J, truck stop there, that, that cannot be understated, how significant that problem is in that area. And right now, they're, they're off down, now northbound, it's off of that, now Walton Road. If you can grant access to skinning the road, it, it's a right hand turn out of X Y J, and on the spooey, you've got a single lane going south, so it's, it's almost guaranteed instant fix for all of the truck drivers in that area. Plus, spooey does not provide better access to that, all that west side of the highway which is drive, gradual, long, which is also.
You're looking at the initial design, it doesn't move it. Okay, and we had to discount that because it can't be.
I'd say that the spooey is a much preferred overall design layout because it takes up less private property.
But if we're only looking at how and who effect, you know, I mean, you talk to a hundred thousand people that drive through there, not just, not just a few commercials.
Yeah, we got, we can focus on the long term, not just the short term, you know, short term pay, long term pay. It's, it's still managed.
Okay.
My understanding of the problem about Y J was, East Endos County, highway 16 is a state road, and county would not make one, county would not, it could, it was a county or a state. And there may not be.
It may not be true.
When I moved here four years ago to where I live, that's what I was told. So I'm thinking that X Y J, that was their original plan.
Okay, but it's not, it's not outside of our policy. To rebuild that road, I know, just quick and quick, we can go off there, we've done it, we've modified a number of county roads before to, to do that, and then to control the access. Again, access is everything. And, and I know it's a, I know that decisions that we make may not seem plausible at the time. And again, we're, we're to the point that we're moving forward, and we have to look at what the, what the drawbacks are of anything we do. And we've got, we've got time to do it. You'd be surprised how many times we've had to make some modifications through the design process, such as what's for. If we could just use the pencil on the paper that we already have, we'd be, we'd be two years ahead. And so we've got some extensive work to do to make sure that we can provide the proper access, that we're not backing things up. You know, we talk about scope creep, but in this area case, we want to make sure we're going that far enough to correct the problems that we're trying to solve.
Is there any more consideration that's been raised by the House during the chair?
I'll have to get back with you if you want to come and talk, talk about it, you're fine. I'm not prepared to talk about much. I'm not the, I'm not the designer, I'm the, I'm the mouthpiece, I guess, but I am. So I came here to tell you what I know from my notes, so Jamie wrote in for me, so I'm sort of glad on her. Yes?
Bob, Gabe Brown.
Hi, Gabe.
One, thank you.
Did I see you on TV before?
Yep, what's right.
Hi.
When is, I'm excited about the double left turn light. When is that scheduled to be, it looks like the guys are getting really close there.
They are, I think, I think they told me a couple of weeks, so I'm, I'm anxious to see it as well. I think most of the page is done, I think there's some incidental things that they're doing along there. So I think it's, I think we're close, I think we're close. Certainly, public is for the snow line, and just to talk about what we're doing, we start our snow and ice meetings next week against anybody. It was a good time to turn, because of temperature turn, to talk about it, you know, when it was 85 degrees, it was kind of tough. Now it's a little cooler. It's a year long percoration for us, which is almost, I think, 2.3 cents doesn't go toward the end, so it's a little bitter, you can tell. I didn't want to take it from, especially when we don't have it, but yeah, it's, it's a tough situation, but there's a lot of really important projects, a lot of them, and kind of, kind of, Jason, a really good job, fight pretty hard. He got himself in a transportation committee, but it certainly doesn't hurt. I don't want to put you on his spot, Jay, I don't want anybody going to Jay now looking for money, but, but he does a good job, so I appreciate that. Anybody else? Thank you all for having me, I really appreciate it. And like I say, if we get down, get down that road and spend some time, as we get paid some dollars, if you want an update, we'll be glad.
We appreciate your time.
Go ahead, go ahead, Dan.
Who does have final say in a DDI versus spooey? Is it, does District Six, District Six have final say, or do the federals, can they, you know, override you?
We, we prepare the process, it's a, there's a number of people on, what we do, what we call preliminary line of grade, so we look at that, and we look at the pluses and minuses, and there's kind of a, kind of a vote. But overall, it's that committee that tries it, so that's designers, contractors, contract people, contractors, our, our construction folks, everybody is looking at it from all of the different aspects. Our environmental people are on there, so they look for the red flags. Any of those things, and from that, we determine what it is. That's then put in the package, and that's our recommendation to federal highways. And the federal highways will say yes or no. So they can say, is you consider this, or is this, you know, have you fully, fully developed this? They could tell us to go back to the general rule, that's typically not the case. I don't want to get mixed up.
Thank you.
When might our next update, our update be?
Well, design, detailed design is pretty boring. I mean, I could come back in, in a year and tell you not very much.
Well, and to.
The big thing, the big thing is, what we'll need to know in, in a year and a half is, is the next base funded, Jay? So what happens?
What happens is, yeah.
A two year.
Two year.
Okay. And there's what's, there's what's in the plan.
What's in the plan for the next two years.
What they call the out years, okay? So in the plan for this two year.
In the design.
There's a little bit of right away money, but in reality, it's all loss. So we, next budget cycle, we'll come back, put that right away.
Put that right away money in.
Assuming that we stay on schedule, I tell Jay we're ready for right away funds, he fights the other 49, is that it?
And, and if you say, we're not going to be ready, I'm going to say.
We're going to put the right.
We're going to put the right.
If I'm ready, you're all we know, how about that?
You've got another 20 years.
Okay, so I'll be ready in 20 years.
Yes. So.
We've got it in the out years right now.
Right now, for the next five cycles, I will try to keep it.
Keep it there as, there as. Rest of it, so that's what the plan is. Do the design, budget cycle.
Do the budget cycle.
Do the right away.
Right away.
And maybe a utility in the next, that's what the plan is. And then, then, so, we just had, on the even years, we have the budget years, we have two by end. So our next one will be 19, 2026. That's why.
That's why you say it's going to be eight years.
Because we've got two years.
We've got two years of right away.
Or appropriations, sometimes.
Sometimes we overlap utilities. In one by end.
So now we're out to.
At the earliest, then we can start getting.
Based upon how the right away purchase goes.
Utility relocation goes.
It could be 2030.
2030.
After it starts. That's why.
That's why.
This is the beginning of the plan.
Spooey versus the double diamond.
Double diamond, that was a key decision, that's what we're hearing.
But the fact that it's going to be 10 years out, that's finished, and there'll be a lot of mess now and then, is why we did.
Why?
I think the double diamond makes sense.
And that's why we got that third way now. Put that in the budget.
Put that in the budget, so that we get that built, we know we're going to need that lane in the next, as a short term fix.
This is the long.
This is the long.
That's what we're dealing with.
We're dealing with three or four.
Budget cycles.
Budget cycles.
Understood. And so the, to Mr. Bogan's point, the bypass potentially is different than the interchange, right? It's not married?
Yes.
Okay. And so would we potentially learn more in the next two years during this planning cycle of, about maybe the bypass?
I'll talk, I'll talk back, tell them what were our plans, what the cycle is for that, for that. You know, there's a number, there's a number of projects that were all intended, because we do a planning study, this is what this came from, we had, we looked at the whole area, you know, a number, a number of various fronts, I think there was five or six in here that were, that will have, go in lanes. We're looking at the 275, 75 interchange, and there's nine projects coming out of that, every interchange on either side of it, you know, and some, some other things going on there. Houston Road, Donaldson Road, Turf Way, you know, all those projects are all incorporated in the planning study, because you don't want to do something here that's going to affect everything under talking, or we're going to hear. And then, we got the money in.
We got money in here, so we could do that.
In this two years.
This two years.
Connected.
Connected.
Later on, yeah.
Later on, I doubt.
Connected with the score. So for that to go complete, it's also going to be two years now, because they're just doing good design.
Doing good design.
Started that.
None of this.
It's today.
It's today.
We're building for our kids, grandkids.
Grandkids.
The next decade.
Next decade.
The next decade is going to be constructed, but we're making the plans now for a decade later. That's why you can't go to the B B. So it's coming.
It's coming, but.
And the money's there to start it. But it's going to take.
It's going to take.
That answer.
That answer.
Absolutely, and I can't thank you enough on behalf of council and myself for giving up your time this evening with your family to be here for us. So thank you, and thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You all have a safe trip, thank you. Thank you very much. We need to move right on, you want to move right on? You need a break?
It's up to you.
Okay, well, if everyone's good, we'll carry on with our city business. Thank you, sir. Okay, so moving right along, we have Resolution Number 2024-15, a resolution of the City of Walton, Kentucky, requesting the Boone County Planning Commission to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation relative to allowing small-scale automotive sales in the city's commercial two-zone, and if so, what conditions and regulations should apply? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor, and that title sort of says it all. It's very short, I'm just going to read it. Whereas the mayor and city council of the City of Walton, Kentucky, believe that it may be desirous and beneficial to the city and its citizens to allow some small-scale automotive sales in the city's commercial two-zone, if there are appropriate conditions and regulations that would apply. So therefore, be it resolved that the Boone County Planning Commission pursuant to Chapter 100 is hereby requested to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation relative to allowing small-scale automotive sales in the city's commercial two-zone, and if so, what conditions and regulations should apply. Just by further summary, this would initiate the process. I would work with the planners out there to get some language together. Then they would hold a public hearing, make a recommendation back to the city on whether or not to do it, and if so, what the wording would be. And then it would be up to council to make a final decision on adopting an ordinance to incorporate those regulations or a variant of those that would factuate the purpose that we're setting out to review here. So to start that process, you can do that by adopting this resolution by motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
And motion, second. Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Barb Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, and could be cart before the horse, because we had a caucus meeting, that was a special meeting, we didn't get to really discuss this. It's on the agenda, but I understand that we could also work through the details. So moving along, it's municipal order 2024-09. It's a municipal order for the City of Walton, Kentucky, authorizing the city to provide a portion of its funds obtained from the National Opioids Litigation Settlement to the Walton Fire Protection District and the Boone County Sheriff's Department to be used to combat and remediate the effects of the opioid crisis in the city.
Thank you, Mayor, and whereas, as I'll answer a lot of the questions about this, whereas the City of Walton, Kentucky, the city has applied for and has received funds derived from the National Opioids Litigation Settlements to be used for programs to combat and remediate the effects of the opioid crisis in the city. And whereas the Walton Fire Protection District, the fire district, provides first responder emergency medical and firefighting services for the city and its citizens, visitors and guests, and the Boone County Sheriff's Department, the sheriff provides first responder law enforcement services for the city and its citizen visitors and guests. Whereas the fire district and the sheriff are the frontline providers of programs to combat and remediate the effects of the opioid crisis in the city. Therefore, be it ordered as follows. The mayor and city council of the City of Walton, Kentucky, do hereby authorize the city to provide the sum of, in its blank for now, to the Walton Fire Protection District, and the sum of blank for now, to the Boone County Sheriff's Department to assist them with funding of their programs to combat and remediate the effects of the opioid crisis in the city. And then by further summary, obviously, we do not have a police department, we do not have a city fire department. So most of the heavy lifting of combating and remediating the effects of the opioid crisis are being undertaken and will be undertaken by the fire district and the sheriff's office. And therefore, we have received monies, and this would reallocate those monies for those departments to do our heavy lifting on that project. So first, you need to decide if you want to do that, and then secondly, I think the mayor has a recommendation on how much of the money that we have would go to each of the agencies.
Thank you, sir. And so what I've learned is currently our total is $55,000. I know there was discussion about the city holding some of the funds for potentially Narcan or even the AED devices that we could potentially locate in city hall or even here in the senior building. There is one over here, but it's locked behind closed doors, it is used for the senior YMCA, that is theirs, not the city's. So personally, just looking at the opportunity, I was hoping to potentially break it out by percentage. And the greater percentage going to our own fire district for their needs, and then, of course, the Boone County Sheriff's Department, and where we would retain funds for things that we could use for the same benefit of our citizens. So potentially 60, 60, 30, 10, or if anyone has suggestions other than that. But again, we're, currently, we have $55,000.
Motion to approve as Terry has recommended?
Second.
Second.
So before you vote, we would then apply the mathematics to the formula that she, and plug in that. And you'll leave that up to us to do that. Or there's somebody out here, maybe.
Chet's good at math, isn't he?
Chet can do the math for us.
Well, I know what 10% is, that would be. That's 5,500, so 5,500 would go to the city.
All right, so you have a motion in a second.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Barb Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
Outstanding, thank you. And moving on, as we amended the agenda, the last point of business.
This is the number 16.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so this would be ordinance number 2024-16, an ordinance of the City of Walton, Kentucky, amending ordinance 2021-10 in sections 120.03, 120.05, and 120.99 of Chapter 120 of the City of Walton's Code of Ordinances in order to revise the city's regulations for the operation of short-term rentals within the city. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor, and as the mayor indicated, ordinance 2021-10 adopted our regulatory scheme for short-term rentals in the city. And what we're proposing here is to make some fine-tuning of that ordinance, now that we've had it in operation for a few years. On page two, toward the bottom, right now, we charge a $15 registration fee. If you do it for a half a year, it's prorated to $7.50. That doesn't pay the freight. The recommendation is to raise the fee to $500, and for a half a year would be $250 for the registration fee. Currently, we allow a maximum of four homes per city street which may be used for short-term rentals. The proposal here is to reduce it from four to two. Currently, we have a maximum of 10 homes per established subdivision which can be used for short-term rentals. That, this proposal is to reduce 10 to six. Currently, we have no maximum for the city at large, and we're proposing to add a maximum of 20 homes permitted in the city. And then finally, currently, the penalty for violating the regulations found in the original ordinance was set at $25. The proposal will be to raise that to $100. And I see I have a mistake on page four, 25 should be struck through, the wording, $25. So those are the changes that are being proposed, that's first reading, although not required by state law. To take the temperature of the council, you typically do vote on first reading. So it'd be appropriate to either discuss or go ahead and vote on first reading now.
Okay, make a motion to approve.
Amy motion?
Amy made a motion to approve on first reading?
Second. Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Barb Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, and that's business for this evening, and we'll move to council comments. Amy, do you have anything?
Hi, thank you for Zoom meeting with me again. Hopefully, I'll be able to join y'all on the next go-round. I wanted to remind everyone on council and the people that came that this Sunday, Gaines House, will have wine tasting by Verona Vineyards and pumpkin painting, vendors, folk music, and the admission's only $5, and you get to look in the house and everything, so I hope y'all tell everybody and get that news out there.
What time is that, Amy?
That is, I think, from 2:00 to 4:00. But I'm going, after the meeting, I'm going to share the information on my page and on the other pages.
Thank you, and so for those who couldn't hear Amy, she just wanted to remind everyone that this Sunday at the Gaines House, $2 to $4 or $5 admission in fall festivities, including.
From Verona Vineyards.
Wine tasting and.
Pumpkin painting.
Pumpkin painting, and she's going to share that on social media as well, so just a reminder. Thank you, Amy. Rose, do you have anything?
No.
Barb?
I just want to thank everybody for being here.
Absolutely. Sherry?
I'm good, thanks, everybody.
Dan?
I don't have anything there.
Matt Brown?
I do not have anything, thank you.
And mayor comments, again, I just want to mirror what they've stated, is thank you for being here this evening. I'm glad that we had a great informational session. Moving closer to the holidays, so everyone be safe, and just thank you for loving our community in our small town.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Amy already voted aye.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
She said yes.
Barb Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, guys, have a good evening.